Meeting of the Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee Budget Facilities and Safety Subcommittee to Order. Okay, so we have three things on our agenda that I want to accomplish today. So we can do them in any order, it doesn't matter. The first thing is we need to come up with like a mission statement. I think Laurie, they're trying, we're trying to get our school committee protocols and our documents all in order and we want to kind of come up with, you know, a couple of sentences about what our subcommittee does and so that we can submit it for that document. The second thing I wanted to talk to you guys about was just your thoughts on what everyone wanted to do for this upcoming budget cycle, which is hopefully going to be a little bit easier than last year, thanks to all the hard work, work put in. So, you know, if we, you know, we didn't have this advantage last fall where everyone was kind of in place and ready to go. So, you know, does it make sense to start meeting with some of the FinComs a little bit earlier and who's going to do what and, you know, what can we do to help facilitate that? And then the last thing is I just wanted to touch on, Erin was doing some facility walkthroughs to do some capital planning and I just wanted to go over that real briefly. So, where do you guys want to start? What do you guys want to start with? Doesn't matter. Anything you think like easier to get it out of the way?
Probably, I mean, might be easier to do facilities.
Yeah, that's probably easier. Alright, okay. So that is like kinda, so what Erin has been doing is he, oh, Erin, why don't you talk about what you've been doing?
Yeah, so I've always done sort of working walkthroughs. So, you know, there's different sorts. There's all back and forth over the different types of sort of things. So, I've always taken, you know, people with an interest, with understanding, you know, it's great to get someone who knows boilers and roofs and things like that. You know, I hate to send out an email that says like, you need the following qualifications to come on this walk. When I reach out to the towns, I make it clear like this is a working walkthrough. We're climbing on roofs, we're digging under boilers where necessary and things like that. So usually the towns will send out someone who's, you know, their facilities person, their DPW person, or someone on their capital subcommittee who knows or knows the buildings. We had some representatives from Berlin and Boylston who seemed pretty knowledgeable, walked through those. And then, you know, did a second round with school committee. Also like to keep them small and I like to try to keep like politics out of it. So sometimes keeping, you know, those groups a little separate can help as well, you know, avoid those conversations about, you know, state funding and things like that. You know, as Jessica was talking about, I think there's also a place for separate meetings, maybe closer to budget time where we invite in the FinComs, the select boards, the state representatives and have real deep conversations about budgets and our ability to do some of the capital improvements that really are needed, like keeping up in one of the big conversations we're having on an ongoing basis is how we fund technology, right? So every school district across the state has effectively become a one-to-one district post-COVID, but the cost structure of that is pretty significant, right? So we've, instead of having, you know, laptops or Chromebooks on carts where three or four classrooms would share, every single student has one and those have to cycle through, you know, every four to five years, right? So you're on a cycle of replacing all of your Chromebooks and, you know, we think of a thousand kids here at $350 plus a Chromebook, right? That's cycling through $350,000 across the district just for the Chromebooks themselves over the course of a five-year cycle. So, you know, minimally $70,000 a year in commitment, but possibly more. Then there's just keeping up the Wi-Fi, right? Now that we have all of these devices, right? It's drawing more from the Wi-Fi. So we've, many school districts have had to increase their Wi-Fi, increase their server capacity, their security. You know, we're going to be spending, I want to say it's around $30,000 just on software to manage student Chromebook use, which is yet another challenge. What they, you know, dealing with what students do with them at home. So, you know, there's a lot of conversation to be had with state officials about like, where's this money coming from, right? We have roofs, we have windows, we have things like that that need to be replaced. Now on top of that, you know, in the COVID world, we had the ESAR funds, right? And a lot of us funded that one-to-one on ESAR funds, but those are gone. So, you know, right now they're sitting in our capital and for the towns to provide us with capital funding for that, that's money taken away from doors and windows and roofs and boilers and things like that. So, you know, how do we balance those things? So those are really good conversations that I think should be had with state representatives. You know, I think we're also in an environment where no one knows what's happening with federal funding, right? But whatever you think of it, I mean, I'm not, no matter where you stand on that federal funding, it's the not knowing that I think is the most challenging part for people and what's going to happen if some of that goes away or a lot of that goes away or, you know, or they decide to block grant it or something like that. So, you know, so I see this as like multiple types of walks or meetings that talk about capital and talk about these sorts of things, but with different groups of people.
The other thing you need to be looking at, and we're used to that, is having a capital improvement money, right, put aside. So one of the things that we'd like you guys to be looking at this year as a budget sub is like in Hampton Wilberham, I'm sorry we keep referring to that, but they had X number of dollars every year they put away because the unexpected could happen. This is stuff we're talking about. We know we gotta do computers. We know we gotta look at those doors and windows. But what if a boiler goes? What if an HVAC system goes? Like where are we getting the money from? These are like our homes, right? We have to have some rainy day funds. We don't. We have no real funding and capital line alone that we can say, okay, if something happens and we pushed and Hampton Wilberham, every year they dedicated X number of dollars that they were in the budget, they were going to put in to this fund. So this way they have it. So like a rainy day fund. And that's something that if you're talking about work that this budget sub could be doing, that is leaving that charge.
Yeah, and we like literally talked about that yesterday when we were at BES because the boiler, I think the date on it was 1999, right?
Right.
They were like, don't worry, like there's two. And oh, by the way, thank God we invested in the mini splits because they also throw heat. So if one of them did go, they have the other one. If both of them went, they have the mini split. So it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have to cancel school. But we were talking about a contingency fund where even if the towns contributed like $5,000 a year or like it's $5,000 a building, I think you would have that in the budget and we removed it. I can't remember.
I didn't. I mean, it was, it was, it was not there when I got here.
Or maybe it was an OPEB or something. You had a small, yeah, maybe you had a contributor. I mean, it's similar along the lines of that concept of, you know, putting away a little bit. So it's growing and it's put away. It's like a savings account. So.
And we say 1999. Like if you really think about 1999, I know some of us in this room and others, that's a long time ago, right? Twenty-six years ago right now. That's a long time for something. Our boilers on your home.
Hot water heater. Yeah, you would never, you, you know, like, and, you know, insurance, but at the same point in time, like there's still going to be huge upfront costs for these. So I think that's something we look to see.
You refer to this building. Everybody refers to this building as the new building, right? Like that's, it's not that new. I mean, you know, the warranty, I guarantee the warranty on your boilers has expired, right? So typical warranty is 10 years from manufacturer date. So you're 13 years on this building and manufacturer date was surely before the building was built. So if one of the boilers here goes, we have no warranty.
No backup.
Yeah. And it, and it feels like this is the new building, doesn't it? Like it really does, right? But.
And just for reference point, 1999, we have kindergarten parents born that year, just so you know. When I'm looking through all this.
College. My freshman year.
We have parents that are born in, we have to look at their date of birth. The parents were born in 1999. Like we're getting.
Sure, a lot of parents.
So anyway, sorry.
So is, is the school choice fund something that you use for that kind of thing? I know it's not ideal.
We could dip into that if we wanted to, yeah.
If there was.
Yeah, that would be like a need, yeah. I mean, I feel like school choice is a more like everyday emergency. Like for example, we had to use that when we had a superintendent that, you know, quickly gave her a notice for retirement and we had to hire, you know, another superintendent and, you know, things like that, like hiring.
Pay two salaries.
Pay two salaries. Or like, yeah, if we have somebody go out on some type of leave.
Hopefully that's not an everyday emergency.
It's not gonna, no. But like, you know what I mean? Like staff changes happen every, I mean, it happens, right? People go, teachers go on leave, things happen and there's, you know, issues where, you know, employees, whatever. Not even, not only that, like, oh, you know, the school, the gym floor needs to be refinished and the, I mean, I don't know how much a boiler is going to cost, but like some of these ticket items we've got on these capital plans, like the boiler, just the boiler updates at Tohonto or the HVAC updates, it was like $236,000. And it keeps getting pushed every single year because we don't have that kind of money. But if we started putting $5,000 a year into a contingency fund and then we went to the town, you know, when the need was imminent and said, hey, we can use like $100,000 for our contingency fund. If you can throw in $100,000, we want to do it this year. It's doable. But you have to build up the fund. It wouldn't be something that we, any of us would get benefit of using right now, but it would be something that in 10 years from now, if we're putting $5,000 in and you put in some type of high-yield savings counter, I don't know, some type of account.
That's what we did at Hampton.
Yeah. And then, and then you're earning money on it. And then, you know, in 10, 15 years from now, you know, when Tohonto is, all the stuff at Tohonto is starting to go, yeah, 30 years old. You don't, you can't fix it. You need, you know, it's not updates. It's you need a new boiler, you need a new this. Then it's there. So I just think it's a smart, something smart to do. If we can squeeze out like $5,000, I'm, we can't, we, we cut heads last year. So we're not going to be like, oh, we're going to put aside $25,000. But if we could even like a thousand or just somewhere to start that we've established a process, I'd say that's a win. And again, I don't think it's irresponsible.
Look at it, right? It's like, well, this year maybe, and then they had a thing that every year they're putting, I think it was 50,000, right? They're putting aside maybe.
Yeah.
It's like 50,000 every.
Wait, 5-0?
5-0. They put away. Because respectfully, 5,000 will do nothing, right? Or 1,000 here. It will help us out a little. It's a place to start, but we all know you bring a plumber or something in here.
Just like the precedence that you have the account.
I agree. That's right.
We can do that this year, like to set that, just to set it up, like I said, because to convince towns, alright, and then get them, alright, this is a palatable option. Like even have it as a separate line item on the budget. So it's called out so that it's not part of the operating. It's like a contingency funds that was contributing. You know, just like OPEB, like it's something that we say, alright, well, we have to do OPEB because, you know, it's OPEB and we're going to need, this is a liability. We gotta do it. Same type of thing and maybe.
Everyone will complain until the first time something happens. You say, let me go to my capital fund and draw that money. Then I'll be like, I'm really glad you did that, right?
And you're going to find out how woefully inadequate that capital fund is going to be because, you know, your roof is going to be three, four million, right? Your doors and windows are going to be millions of dollars. It's a lot, Hampton Wilberham, a lot of the intent was that would be used for the pre-work for a lot of those things. So oftentimes, you know, if you're going to do your roof, you're going to need to have it engineered in advance and do some of that pre-work, bring in an engineering and that's going to cost you 30 to 50,000. So then from there it would be like go out to the towns for the rest of the money because we know it's not going to cover that.
In emergency, like the elevator died one year, right? And we had to get kids.
Stuff like that, elevator, yeah.
They come in and they, like, they can charge whatever we want. We need the elevator fixed for these kids that are, that need our, adults that need to get up and down on the second floor. That was a huge expect, unexpectedly.
Yeah, or like years when the town, like, you know, prime example, like the furniture. I mean, they were able to make it happen here through a donation, but you know, like if there's things that we need and the towns are like, we can't fund that this year, then at least we'll have something that we can tap into if the school committee decides. So I think even just to start it and have it.
Shows good faith, it does.
Yeah, and like just looking at the other thing, and I know, you know, I think maybe Erin, whenever you're ready, we can like go over the capital plans with everybody, like.
Yeah, I mean, if we have a next meeting, we could walk through that.
That's what I think we'll do on our next meeting. Yeah, it's like have that, yeah, I think that'll be like next, the September meeting, if you want to do that, like we'll go over. Because I think that's like the first thing the towns want, but just seeing doing the walkthroughs, like there is no way, you know, the Tohonto one is so, it's huge, right? There's so many things. And it's because every year we're like, nope, we can't do this, this, this and this this year. So all the stuff just keeps getting pushed. So I think we need to start having some real discussions with the town and say, we have to pick like three or four items on this list and prioritize them and just kind of figure out how to get them done.
And you have 700 people a day walking through this building, hitting the doors, opening up, using the bathroom, flushing the toilets, like 700 people a day go through this building. That's, that's a lot using the, we're a ten.
Alright, so what we'll do is this will be plans for September. For you to, you know, that spreadsheet that you had, Erin? That was a really.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll bring those and I'll share them in advance. That's no problem.
Yeah, yeah. And we're planning to go to Berlin on Thursday.
Yep.
And climb on the roof, right? We gotta climb the roof.
We're going to try to. I know the, the people from the Apple are going to be there. So I don't know where access is and whether, we didn't do it last time I did it.
What time, what time is that scheduled for?
I don't know what time are we doing that? I want to say that's in the Apple, 2 o'clock.
There'll be one gone by then.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, that's that. Okay, so I'm, are you guys okay with meeting monthly, at least until the budget is done? Is there a day of the week that works best for everybody? Just so we're not like last minute. And then what I'll do is let's pick a date for September and then what I'll do is in September I'll like come up with a schedule and then we can like decide if that all works for everybody. Like a day of the week or times that work better. Like I will be the first to say, because I have my kids. Like between school hours is great for me. I can make any day of the week work. But I, I know Beth, you're only.
I can't do Fridays, but other than that I can figure out a way.
And you think in after-school?
No, no, during school hours for me is perfect.
Does that work for everyone else, you guys too?
I can do that.
Okay.
Beth, you said you can't do Fridays.
Yeah, I mean, we'd love to see if there's space here. If not, I mean, we can do the office. It is what it is.
This, this smallish, yeah.
Wednesday and Thursday are good for me.
Wednesdays and Thursdays? And does that, does that work? Alright, Wednesday or Thursday. Alright, and like, like what time of day, like 10? Oh, you like 1? Alright, that's fine.
Okay.
And that will give you a hard stop as well, too, because you've got to get your kids and all that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. This is be like an hour. Like this is just to kind of review what's going on. So 1:00 PM and we'll do it monthly. And I'll try to do it like the week before the school committee meeting. So I think like for September, we meet the 9th, I think.
Is our school committee meeting the?
9th or the 16th? I don't remember.
I think it would be the 9th.
So then maybe I'll try to schedule a meeting like for Wednesday, like September 3rd or 4th. Does that, would that work for one of you guys? What do you prefer?
The 3rd for that week I would meet.
3rd at 1:00 PM?
Wait, September 3rd?
Yeah.
Sure.
1:00 PM? Alright, let's put that on.
I'll have Jen send the calendar invite out to you guys.
Alright, and then what we plan to do is capital. And the other thing is like.
Tohonto, right?
Yeah.
Because I went to Central.
And hopefully the.
Today I went to Central.
Yeah, I get tips and I'll feel so bad.
Yeah, we'll make sure I have a location determined.
And we'll find a place here at the high school. So we can say it's going to be at Tohonto. We've just got to figure out a location.
Yep. And then the other thing I wanted to do this year, and I don't know if they would be interested in it, and I think we do them separately, is I think it would be worthwhile to have like the FinCom people in to meet with us. Like, so they talked, Erin, you guys did a great job of working with the FinComs in both towns, but I think it would be great to like hear what they have to say. And for those meetings, if they are like, no, we can't do during the day, that's fine. Then we can figure out like.
Yeah, Berlin will definitely have to be evening.
Yeah, so that's fine. Just, right, and that's fine. But, you know, we can just figure out a time so that we know the time. So we don't have to sit through their whole meeting. We just go and we're there for like 30 minutes or whatever, so that we can go and we can have a conversation. Totally flexible on that.
Does that change every other, the people on those committees?
In Boylston?
For FinComs?
Yeah.
It does. In Boylston, I don't know.
Berlin's pretty stable. They just added somebody in.
So it's the same people? And Boylston's the same?
So what they do in Boylston is, like I know this year Dave Butler rolled off. I don't know if the other people will stay, but yeah, they're appointed, they're appointed committees by the select board. So they don't have to, if you're, you're asking, there's no election. So if the people want to stay and yeah, they tend to be pretty stable. Like the people that have been on it have been doing it for a while. They know what they're doing. But there's, like you said, new people filtering it out here and there.
Know our audience, right? If we have someone new coming on board as opposed to the ones we worked with this past year, I didn't know if that switched over.
I think Boylston might have.
Berlin only had four this last year and can have five. So Berlin is appointed by the moderator, not the select board.
Oh, okay.
So they just appointed somebody for the fifth spot?
Okay.
And did I hear Peg Stone's not the select, is not the, is she still?
The chair?
Chair?
No, it's Scott Hawkins.
Does that switch over to?
They roll that.
They, same in Boylston. Every year they just rotate chair, which actually I personally think is a really good. And that's what the FinComs do too, by the way. I can't speak for Berlin. Okay, yours stays. So in Boylston, they take turns being chair. So like, and I think they do a two-year stint on the FinCom of who's chair. So Howard did two years. I would guess he's not going to be the chair this year.
And does that roll over like September 1st? Did that already roll over?
I imagine that Scott Schultz is still the chair. I think.
Scott has always been the chair in Berlin from when I've worked with him. No, before Scott it was.
Scott Hawkins became the select board chair after the election. So they, they roll it depending on the election year.
Wasn't before Scott Schultz?
And I asked that just to see who Jen's going to invite to these things as well, to make sure we know the players. Yep, okay.
Yeah, Alf, I can ask who the chair is for Boylston, for FinCom now. So they, the, these FinComs, they have these liaisons, like it was this woman Julie in Berlin, but she's no longer.
She's not on the committee.
Yeah, so I don't know if they'll appoint a liaison. She came to, like she came to the meetings. She, yes, she came to, during the day when we had budget sub meeting, she wanted to come. And same thing with like in Boylston, like they'll come during the day. So we can do separately, see what works for their schedule.
We can invite them. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
They come, they come.
If Scott, it doesn't work, yeah, and if it works, I'm happy.
Maybe the new person they just appointed might have a more flexible schedule. She might be able to.
Yeah, just so like we're on the same page. So like we're looking and we're like, alright, this is what we're asking for. And they can come up and be like, yeah, we can't do this because this is all the free cash we have. And we're like, we can, you know, just to have that knowledge. So it's not so much back and forth. Alright, so that's good. And then, alright, so last thing. So this is good we're cruising. So we need to do this mission statement. I guess it's not really a mission statement. It's more of just like what our purpose for our group is. So I don't know, Lisa, I was just going, you're so good with words. Like, do you think you can come up with like two sentences?
Yeah, not on the spot though.
Not now? No, that's why I was just like.
Right now on camera, can you tell?
Lisa.
Can you zoom in on her?
No, I was just going to say like, it doesn't, I guess we're not doing this in now. It's going to be later, like in September maybe, I think. But she wanted, you know what I'm saying? She wants like a para, not a paragraph, just a couple of sentences about what our mission, like what we're trying to accomplish. And I think it's, we're trying to, you know, twofold, right? We, we try to serve to be liaisons between, you know, the school district and the town officials when it comes to like the budget and the facilities. And then, you know, also to work with the school district on behalf of the school committee on any more complicated or more time-consuming budget questions or issues. Like during a meeting, you know, we might have questions or need more elaboration on something and the chair might say, can you guys take that to a sub meeting?
Do some legwork before.
Yeah, do some legwork before we.
Streamline. That's usually the word they do. So you can bring it to the school committee. So they don't have to sit and all this. They streamline it to that.
Yeah, so we're not spending like an hour going over, like we don't have to go through line by line of Erin's document. We can say budget sub sat through, Erin explained it all to us. If you want that information, it's recorded, here's the minutes. But, you know, we decided or we talked about, you know, these are the priorities and this is what we're putting forward and, you know, just like how policy does, how they kind of do the legwork on those and then they bring the recommendations and it's easier.
We can check some of the districts if you want to help with that. They must have some stuff written. So we're not reinventing a wheel, right?
Sorry. I know. Alright, you're so good with like, it's like not my forte. Numbers aren't my forte. Alright, so that's it. So yeah, I mean, there's no like timeline on that. Maybe like for our September 3rd meeting, I think. Yeah, a couple of weeks. And then we can submit that to Laurie to put in for, because she's been working on the protocol document.
So September 3rd, 1 o'clock, Jen will invite Megan, Beth, Lisa, Erin, myself. Anyone else you want at that meeting?
No, not for that one. And then we'll have the agenda for that. I'll put it together and then I can like send it to Jen. It'll be like capital planning.
And we'll say 1 to 2. That work?
Yeah, 1 to 2.
So this way then we can get you out of here before school dismisses us as well.
Yeah, 1 to 2 is perfect. We're going to do capital planning. Yeah, we're not going to be here for like hours. And that's the other thing. I feel like if we meet more frequently, then we can take everything in like piecemeal. So for this meeting, we're going to talk about capital planning and we'll have a calendar for the year.
And a mission statement.
And we'll review Lisa's mission statement. Yeah, perfect. Our mission statement.
Mine, mine feels a little different.
Perfect.
Is that all going to be under subcommittees or?
Yeah, I, yeah, we gotta add, I can add a full.
So in terms of mission statement planning, so I'm thinking like mission and vision usually go together. It's like vision is where you want to get to. Mission is how you get there. So it might be worth also thinking about like, where, where do we like, assuming we're all here in five years, right? Like where do we want to be in five years? And then what's our pathway to that sort of five-year goal, right? So, you know, do we want to be the most financially feasible school district in the state of Massachusetts? That could be our vision, right? Or, you know, something along that lines. And then what are the things we're going to do? Couple of sentences, again, not long, like elevator pitch, what are we doing to get there is always what I've done with like mission and vision.
Yeah.
And we're going to be doing that with the strategic plan as a district, coming up with a new mission and vision. We're going to be working with you guys all through that. So it might, and that's happening like next month. So Lisa, that might help you as well too, when we have a whole district-wide, what the entire community, what the mission with the vision is. We're working that together.
And I like that.
And then this way then you can just break that off as well too. So not that I don't want you to do the work you have planned, but that will be helpful as well. So we want to make sure there's someone aligned, right?
It has to be aligned, right? And yeah.
Here's the mission and vision for the district. Here's it for policy. Here's for budget. Here's for curriculum, which is a huge missing piece. So that we're working on this year. So all of that.
Yeah, and, and what we might need to do as a school committee is like realign what our subcommittees are. Like obviously budget facilities and policy and negotiations are two core things, but we have this student success subcommittee, you know, not to get too off topic, but, you know, to your point, if we're doing then some, I don't know, maybe you want to take, don't spend too much time on this. Take a stab at it. So Laurie has something to put in the document.
But it's probably going to get revisited.
But we might.
That's what I was trying to say.
So yeah, no, I get exactly what you're saying. Cause we're doing, yeah, so don't spend, I'd say just a couple of sentences, just because you're really good at words.
So along those same lines, can I ask you, and I know we're off topic to if I go through you for a second, like curriculum, where do you believe that falls?
Well, that would be like the student success subcommittee.
Is that where you think that falls?
We need to kind of like, that subcommittee needs to be, again, we probably need to just describe it better.
Redefine.
Redefine.
I don't think it really knows what it is.
And then what Jess's point was when she was saying we should probably, should be disbanded, was what she was saying last year before all the cell phone stuff started. But you said that? Jess was saying that maybe we need, but then it's really needs to be redefined.
I forget what we had. I think we had, it used to be like technology and something.
So I'll be talking to you guys as a school committee. We need, we need a curriculum subcommittee meeting, right? There's, there's, and again, I apologize if I'm complicated about that. Definitely be talking to you about that. If it already exists somewhere, if you could let me know where you think that lives, that'd be great. Cause I need a curriculum for a new math program, new ELA, all of that stuff seems to be coming, which is going to affect budget. That's why I'm bringing this around, right? Like, we, we got to talk about that, right? Cause I'm hearing that they've been looking for a new math program they've been working on. So we got to financially think about that. And where does that live? Does it live in budget? Maybe. Or does it live in the curriculum? So I need to know that.
Yeah, we definitely need to have.
I think it'd be really important too for that, like if you're going to keep that student success and put curriculum under it, is defining what student success means, just like the vision, right? Like what, when I'm talking about student success, does it mean every kid goes to Harvard? Does it mean we provide a myriad of opportunities for kids to pursue blah-bity, blah, blah, blah? What other avenues do we want to look at? Like what, how do we define success within our community? Cause every community views it a little bit differently. Right? Depending on size, socioeconomics, demographics, you name it.
And I need to get in front of you guys, the curriculum that they're looking at for new math program for not this year, for next year. But that's a, that's a lot of heavy lifting that I don't want six people having to sit and sit through that. So is there a place that they could live as a subcommittee meeting that Joey can come in and John can come in and Renee can come in and talk to you about that stuff? So therefore then you guys then will push that up to the school committee. But there's a lot of conversation needs to happen between now and next year because they want to implement the new math program for next year. And I haven't even had a chance to even look at it yet. So it's, that's my focus this year is curriculum. And so I'm going to need somewhere along the lines a curriculum subcommittee. We used to have that, just curriculum sub as a, as a subcommittee meeting, but does it fall under that student success? I don't know. Sure. So I'm just going to ask you to think about that for our next meeting.
Yeah, we, that's, I think we need to have a whole committee discussion on that stuff. And, you know, that's the other thing, Lisa, as you're, as I'm like, do this mission statement and then I don't know, is everyone going to stay on the, like, that's a whole committee discussion? Like, are we going to stay put? Are we going to? Yeah, so I think hopefully we, it's not on the agenda for tonight, but hopefully our next meeting, I think it should be on the agenda. And we need to kind of set up, like set ourselves up for next year or this current school year.
Renee will be definitely talking to you about that. Cause we're, yeah, we got a lot to talk to school committee about when guys curriculum.
Yeah, it definitely wouldn't be budget. And I think we still need a budget subcommittee and we still need a mission statement no matter what, like what we do. And it's pretty straightforward. I felt this is the easiest one because it's so black and white.
We're going to need you guys to budget.
You do all the work.
Yeah.
This guy does all the numbers.
That's what it is.
It's, yeah, yeah, and numbers are just. Anyways, sorry.
I need to take off chapter there.
No, no, good topic, and yeah, I mean, we had mission statement on here, so, um, it's definitely a broader discussion that I'll plan to bring up tonight.
Lisa, just one last thing, I'm so sorry, like, even our mission vision for budget should be student-centered, like, like, what, why are we doing this work here every single day? Like, somewhere along the lines, it's gotta be student-centered. That's what we're working on with our strategic plan, it's student-based, every conversation, including this budget, is about our kids. Sorry, now it's becoming, it's becoming a paragraph right now, I apologize.
No, but I, I totally agree.
Okay.
Yep.
Why are we doing this work?
Yeah. Alright, no, no, don't be sorry, that's, that is literally the core point, right? It's why all of us are here.
We sometimes forget.
Should be obvious, but.
You get wrapped up in the details.
I haven't talked about a kid in probably a couple days now, so it's, I'll get the adults and move on from that.
Wrapped up, so we're trying to get as much money as, or, you know, fund the schools, we can talk offline, okay. Alright, so anything else? We're good? Meeting September third, we're gonna do a capital plan, alright?
Yep.
Alright, could I please have a motion to adjourn?
No problem.
Alright, alright, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Brittany.